You want me to?
Okay, so we're gonna call this meeting to order, it is four thirty P M on. Thursday, December seventh, my daughter's birthday for a harbor day, you know. Alright, so let's do a roll call, sis. Perla?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Brayden, hopefully on the way, Amio, Amio, sorry, Amy. I know, we've, we've given her permission to be gone through the uh end of the year. And then Mary Schlinker, we haven't seen her in a while. Yeah, we gave both of them, so come January, we'll have to decide on what we're gonna do with absenteeism. And our guests and our staff members, mirrors or mirrors?
Here.
Roll?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
Alright, and Elizabeth is on her way, correct?
Supposed to be.
Alright. So, Mary passed out the minutes and the agenda. And these minutes are from October fifth, which is when the last time we got to meet. And I just need to know if people have read over them and have approved them, or do we make changes?
Isn't that four thirty? Oh, four thirty one, alright, sorry, you're fine.
This commission is very fast.
Now I have two people have to be out of here by five thirty, so.
So, hmm, I move, we approve the minutes as received. For October. Fifth, yes.
This motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The minutes for October fifth have been approved, as they are written already. Alright, so, I have asked guest speakers to be in here today, Mrs. Elba, she's here now, awesome. And um, I guess start with the Denny hits and B, Mike, we'll call Raw on the gazebo at Upland, so you're both here. You wanna tell us kinda what's going on there?
Well, has. Yeah, and all those guys, the board for fifth.
Awesome.
Need to do some action on um, on November maybe. I don't know if you did.
Not if there wasn't a meeting.
There was no meeting.
No?
Cause it was canceled due to an storm. So there was no minutes, other than our own little gossip. Alright, so, you've completed gazebo, we're good at Upland Park, yay, thank you very, very much. And then C is with Miss Elizabeth, with Danny Blame Park and the skate park uh equipments at the Rotary. Gabriel is thinking about.
So their last meeting that they talked about it, um, they actually went over there and did measurements, and it's gonna take every inch of that entire part. Um, and there will be no room for anything. So, what they're thinking, and then the other part of it is that it won't fit in the footprint of the basketball court at all. Um, if they put it back out by Sunview, they'll be able to expand it and just expand the basketball court. Um, but obviously, that's gonna be a, a spring thing, you know, do, so need a court concrete. So, um, we'll need to have a meeting with him and, or with him and, and Raw and Andrew to discuss. Where we go from there, cause we basically have to convey the part to them, and then let them do their work, and then they convey it back to us.
Right, so Danny, Danny Blame Park is too small.
Yes, too small.
Looking at Sunview, right?
Yeah.
Right, I like Sunview, it's a nice, nice part, wish it was somewhere. Alright, and then. Update on the museum, pal?
Let's see, um. Well, since October, we have um, lifted a new board of directors. And uh, we had an open house, and we had seventeen people attend. And I had them sign up for different things for the museum, rather than saying, you know, I want you to be involved in everything, pick what you wanna do. And so, uh, out of that, um, I had someone come forward to become my team leader for displays. And she already has come up with two outrageously wonderful ideas, um, and. I'm, I'm afraid to ask her for anymore, cause it's, it's just over the top. Um, and then, uh, she, I gave her a team to work with. And then, uh, John, um, Phantom volunteered to be our social media person, which gave me a lot of. Confidence, because I spell sis with a C, which tells you what my spelling skills are like, and I write like I talk. Which is a very long sentence without any punctuation, so, um, with John doing the work on Facebook, I, we can be proud that it will be done. Correctly, so, and he's got some ideas about how doing flashback Fridays and things like that, so we already have that coordinated. So that, um, he has access to the Facebook page, and then we're just gonna try to feed him things all the, uh, all the time. So we're gonna, tomorrow, we're gonna take pictures of, um, what we're doing. Um, in our, uh, work party, and that'll be some of the stuff we'll have on Facebook. And, um, I'm just struggling a little bit with trying to get all the logistics of, I've been to the bank twice to try to get. The bank account switched over, and today when I went, I had all the minutes, and then they said, oh, you can't do it, the former president has to do that, so. I have to start all over there, and um, I did have a meeting with the city today, and we got things coordinated on how to. Work with, um, the keys for the museum, and, um, and then I was also able to share a couple of weak spots, it is an interior, while I checked on that.
Okay.
So.
Are we thinking about doing keyless entry?
Yes, that's, we were talking about that when you came in. Well, yeah.
So, um, anyway, that's kinda where we're at, we, uh, didn't, we weren't having a meeting in December. Because just having a meeting is not anything, I want some action, so, gonna have a work party instead, and then. I'll schedule something, I do have a date set for January, but I can't remember where it is right now, so, that's it, it's coming along.
Awesome. You too here, alright, and I know I got lots on this deal. On our agenda, but it's because it's the end of the year. And as the Parks and Rec Commission, we brought up lots of things we want done or seeing about getting done. So that's why I'm bringing this up, so that way, we can see where we are at, and what do we need to continue on. So then, next on our, is E, which is update on the dog part.
Want me to take that one, Mary?
Sure.
I brought everything in, cause I knew you were gonna do that.
As you guys can see outside, we are having Festival Trees, and that is actually going to benefit the animal shelter. That the animal shelter will be attached in some way, that dog part, so that it is, um, available. I get everybody's cell phone back, we all want it too. I have two as well, it's just. So, looking at Tina Knott's part, um, our engineer, it just ballpark, cause you know, she does this all the time. Thinks that this is gonna cost us about one point three million dollars. There are grants out there available, we will, we will be applying for them, um. There are also things like, since we're gonna put a regulation sized soccer field in, the Sounders might help. There's some, some things that they do, there's also some other organizations that actually just come in and build it for you. So, we wanna do those kinda things, um, Morning Rotary has said they will either do the playground or the picnic area cover. So, so we're getting pieces and parts, um, it's kind of one of those things where. You, you know, it's gonna take us a while to get this going, um, and I see this, the least expensive to do is the dog run. I mean, really, the most thing there is expensive, um, so, that may be phase one.
And. Facility is gonna be on the west side of the place?
Um, actually. We are going to let the public pick where it is. So, starting with the festival tree, we are going to put options A, B, and C up on the wall. Everybody that comes will get a ticket, and they will get to vote. On the one they like the best. Sorry, please review, so option A, option B, and option C, which is upside down, weird deal. Um, will be on the wall here, very festival trees, and ongoing until we can actually get our funding or get things started. At City Hall, at the fire department, and at the police department, so that the citizens of Sunnyside can vote on where they want this to be. And there will also be the map that you just saw of the park, so they can put in relationship of, here's where the park is going, this is where the dog run is going. How do you see this? And I think this is a really good way to get, uh, community involvement.
So what's option A, B, and C then?
Option C, see, this is option three, this is the, it's called choice in buildings where you come in. So this option C, where the animal shelter is real close to this building. This is option B. Where the animal shelter is actually closer to the parking lot for the police department park. And. A is where it's a little bit here, and it have the U shaped driveway.
So what happened, that we had talked about over on the.
So we looked at that, and it's not gonna work for our police department, cause their fix of planning of having it over there is. They're, if they're using it, they wanna plan it so that they can go have an actual U parking lot like this. And they wanna be able to go out like that and out this road. Um, because they get a lot of congestion in this park, not especially reports, and then they wanna expand the jail. So if they extend the jail, no more animal shelter.
This, I guess, my main concern when I said that was to make sure it wasn't too far over. Like, we had talked about maybe along the street, you know, having, but then I thought, well, geez, we have soccer going on and things going on.
We'll just have to do it.
But no, but with this location, though, it's not as bad as having it over on the. Along the street side, where we were talking about that at one time, this really isn't, I mean, it's far enough away from. The soccer field, so we.
Well, the soccer field would be right here.
Yeah, but it's not, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm more concerned, and people driving by, whether they see, so now it's either this way.
I didn't, I wasn't ever gonna.
No, we were talking, we're.
So if you were looking at it in real life, it'd look like this.
Okay, see, we had talked about possibly doing. Where, at, at one time, I thought somebody said something about where the parking lot is.
No.
We would know.
Never been in. Yeah, I, cause we can't take that parking lot.
No.
Yeah, cause A would be the closest to the dog run, correct?
Yes, well, and.
They're all within the vicinity of it, other than just the way you drive it now, that's gotta change, but the building. So this building is, is being utilized right now?
Correct, yeah, it's the detective, right, right?
So, I mean, I, that's pretty good.
And you got three options?
Yeah.
So.
Now, is there any way, is there any way that. These, and I know, figure out why, but post them on like a. It's a plywood, and on over there, so then people can drive by and see.
No, no, cause then it gets, then you're running into having to eliminate paper, and trying to figure out, and it doesn't last. It doesn't last, we, we could possibly put up a temporary, um, thing that says. Go to City Hall, Police Department, Community Center, Fire Department, and see the plans and vote. That, that would be something we could do, like our land use, like our land use actions.
Maybe we should see about trying to get these. Or figure out something, and now more out to people, like a tractor supply, because people are constantly going over there for their pets.
So, today, this is the first time I've touched these.
Okay.
And I only am touching them because I made a special request that we have for this weekend. So, really, this is just, this is in baby steps, does that, does that make sense? And so, there will be much more discussion about how we produce this, and, and really honestly, getting this animal shelter going. Is separate from getting that, this is also probably a one point three, one point five million dollar project. So, i- it's gonna take a little bit for us to get going with that.
We have a plan, we have an action, and if you're putting it up on the walls here, and you're putting it out to the. The community to let them know, hey, it's here, this is what we're thinking, what is your opinion? They have that option to come in and, and do that vote.
Yeah, and I guess that's way worse, you're presenting it, will ease the citizens, because I've been hearing. When this project was being announced, negativity of, well, but the city, the city's gonna do what they wanna do, they're gonna put it wherever they wanna put it. Well, now you have an opportunity to voice your opinion, and if you don't voice your opinion, and you're still complaining about it, shame on you, because.
And I don't wanna hear anything from anyone that says that I made the decision solely, because that's not the way it's gonna be. And usually on most stuff, I'm not making a decision, decision solely, I'm just the, the mouthpiece.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a great presentation and a great explanation of what it is we have planned, of our hopes and our dreams.
And I think at some point, it would be possible to have a smaller version that was like, um, eleven by seventeen. Of each one of these, and then showing the park, and maybe on the, I'll ask our engineer, could we have pictures that show the park? Concept at the bottom of each one of these, so people can understand in relationship. Yeah, so, yeah, anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much.
Well, I knew you guys were coming, and so I, I told Mary, I'm gonna be ready this time and have all the stuff they wanted.
Awesome.
And then, since you're looking at this, I'm just gonna remind you guys, we. Talked about Community Center and upgrade for the Community Center. Um, and there's given me another one, but after spending the last two weeks here every day. Um, I'm still gonna do that drop off, so this is our concept for this one. Um, parking behind. Little turnaround, um, and then, obviously. This changes, so we have a left hand turn, because right now, you don't get, if you're behind somebody turning right, you're just sitting there waiting, so we would have left and right turns. Another ingress egress here to this parking lot, we do not lose the basketball court.
Right.
The one thing that I did tell them that I wanna see is, I wanna see this parking lot extended up here, and I want handicap spaces here. And I want to be able to pull in here, drive around, and pull out of here.
Yeah.
Doing it, if you go look when you leave, the grass marks in, in the driveway, those are mine. Because last night, I was here till eight thirty, the people that was here with me were getting ready to leave, I said, I'm gonna go move my car. Cause I don't wanna walk clear over there at eight thirty at night.
Yeah.
Park, so I parked by the door, they left, I locked up, buzzed the alarm and ran out. So I, you know, and that's why I'm saying, this, this for safety reasons.
Yes.
Is, is, is what I think we need to see, and, and you can get your car through here with no problems. And doesn't interfere with this, and this could be considered a one-way, lo- loading zone only, no parking.
Now, there're gonna be.
I need a VIP parking.
Right.
There'll be more handicapped here.
I need a employee of the month.
Down there, and, but those are so far away.
I know, you don't have to tell me, cause I parked in them, and then I leapt my way across the grass.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, I'm limping this week, cause I've been doing a lot, you know.
Employee of the month.
And then they're also, you know, like, they're gonna do an access here to the kitchen, cause all the time, we drive on this, and we. Drop off to the kitchen, and they did it twice today, and then another one to this door to get to the gym.
Maybe sidewalks or something that would take you back.
Yeah.
Right now, there's a playground here that we can't see, but.
Um, more lighting, that's the other thing.
Oh, yeah.
Speaking, speaking of lighting, it's kind of off of that, from Yakima Valley Highway to Decatur. On six, the streetlights are not on.
No, that's on the new construction site, we're still waiting on some parts for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm like, I've gone down a couple of times, and I'm like, whoa, that's kinda screwy.
Yeah, we're still waiting, the, there was a change in the panel, the electrical panel. P P and L did not approve of certain parts, that needed to be corrected, and that's where they're at right now, I think it's supposed to be next week.
Okay, so.
No, I think, I mean, that looks, yeah, looks really nice, I hope, in the future, the. Property owners of that piece will never. And if it's reasonable, that'd be a good piece of ground that.
People don't like to sell to the city recently.
It's like the school, the school, the same thing, we had a house on Ninth Street, a neighbor, and it was right borderline of the, the school. And they offered this, and they said no, and they offered this, they said no. And they offered one more time, and they said no, so they said, fair, so when they built the new school, they brought their fence in, they built. Around that house, so they didn't went to the school and said, hey, we wanna sell.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Same thing happened in Grandview. When I lived, when I worked in Grandview, there was a field that is adjacent to, the middle school had filled adjacent to a property that. It was very rundown, and they just never wanted to sell, and they just finally said, okay, we'll go somewhere else.
Yeah. Good.
So, alright, great information, are you guys happy with what you're getting about, okay? Awesome, so next one is F, which is swings for ten and to twelve year olds, and meat items for ten to twelve year olds. Um, Mike, that one was on you, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, and. My daughter came back from school one day, and she's like, oh, you know, all my friends say they like to go to the park, but. That's really, and unless we're skateboarders, but there's nothing else, but the playground stuff is too big, too small for us. Isn't there something that you guys can look at putting in for kids that are a little bit older? And so, I brought it up, to, you know, discuss and to see in the future what we can do. But, there is a lot of kids out there apparently that enjoy going to the park, and they do go with their parents, like in the summertime with their little ones. Their brothers or sisters, but they can't do nothing but sit there and watch, because they don't do the skate park. And, you know, swimming, I don't know what they do, but any activity, they're, they're just kinda stuck. That's what my daughter was asking.
So I have granddaughters that are eleven, seven, and six. And this last summer, I brought them to the park right here, and the eleven year old played just good, six and seven year old, so.
And this is more entertaining, though, of the downtown part.
So, okay.
Yeah, we're not so much, cause like I told her, there's playground stuff for, you know, bigger kids to run around. At the other park there is, so, but she was saying, it seems like Central Park is.
Well, I think we have a plan, don't we, Mary, of which parks we're gonna do, so our next park is Upland Park.
Is Upland.
So this next year, you guys will be selecting Upland Parks, uh, playground equipment, and then we'll go on to the next part. Um, do you know what's the one in twenty twenty five?
Not off the top of my head.
It's gonna be. I think Kiwanis is the next one.
Kiwanis.
What we do is we evaluate the equipment that's at a park, and we look to see what condition it is, the age of it is. And we pick the, the one that's in the forest shape, and that's what we replace first. And the stuff that, at Central Park's not, it's a little rough, but it's not super rough.
No, no, and, and it's. Again, getting back to the. Yeah. Kids a little bit older that are at Central Park, a lot of people, I mean, a lot of people walk to Central Park, like they, they walk to here. Um, so that's what she was bringing up, we live a few blocks away from Central Park.
That makes sense.
And a lot of their other friends that she knows live within the radius, so. And I explained to her that we're picking one park this year, and it just goes by, you know, for the year, so she said, okay, I'll let my friends know.
She'll be sixteen before we get to Central Park.
I mean, I had an idea when Mike first brought this up, was years ago with Parks and Rec. They used to do activities in Central Park in the summertime, and that would go on to Mary, sorry, Mary, I don't wanna give you more work. But, you know, they, they would hire, hire, hire the kids, like from Key Club and stuff like that. They would go in there and do arts and crafts on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or whatever. They'd have someone from the school in the drama classes come in and do little drama plays during the day, you know. That's someone, quick, quick learning, little drama plays that they could do and participate in, and they were free activities.
So, Sherry, I'm gonna tell you something, when you were in Parks and Rec, how many staff was there?
Um, there was, well, paid staff, there was three of us.
Okay, so, city council finally has three paid staff beginning January first, and it's been twenty five years.
Yeah.
So, we might be able to get back to that level.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I said, you know, back in the day, you know, this is just an option, and I know we put more work on to Mary, and you know.
Not really if she has someone else.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and getting the kids and the people, the community involved, you know. To get them to come and volunteer to do these activities, I mean, because it wasn't the staff that was doing it, I guess we were arranging it. But we weren't out physically doing it, once in a while, we'd go, you know, but not all the time, it was mostly the volunteers that went and did the projects.
And my grandchildren and my daughter participated, and that was before COVID, and boy, it was, it was nice having that. Down there in the park, and.
Are they still serving lunches down there?
I don't think they are in the park.
Didn't they used to, during the summer?
Yeah, during the summer, yeah.
That's what I mean.
But yeah, so it, that was, you know, a good program, but now I know that, you know, things went through that COVID stage, and now. And you're gonna have s- other people to help than just have one or two people that's hard, but.
So they, they approved the recreation coordinator position, so that's the one that'll be out in the field and doing stuff, and. Doing all the things that we might have to do.
Yay, alright, so, moving on, I guess. So G says bylaws for Parks and Recreation Commission, and I talked to Mary about it, and we have a mission. I mean, it's, it's on our website and stuff, and that's actually our bylaws for Parks and Rec, so. Anybody else get questions on that, you know where to find it. It is on our, the city websites for us. Alright, um, and then H, budget proposal. I got him, I'm, I'm questioning you, but.
I think I may have mentioned that, um, you know, in the city, then each department proposes their budget for the next year. I mean, and this year, it's too late, cause it's already, they've, they've already got everything done, but. One, it would be nice, though, to see what is proposed for twenty twenty four, budget for the, the part, you know, the department. But maybe next year, if we can get some input, you know, when we're here at, on the board. That, you know, this is what's going on, this is what we're proposing, maybe we can have.
But that's what they do already.
So, Mike, let me, let me give you a little talk, and this isn't always fun, but as a committee, you really don't have any influence over the budget.
I understand that.
What, what your role is to make suggestions to Mary, and get. As a consensus, as you're, as you guys as a team, and say, Mary, we'd really like you to do this. And Mary has to figure out the budget, Mary has to go to Raw and say, we have this request from Parks and Recreation, and then. That's our jobs, is to find the budget and manage that budget, um, I, I used to laugh as a finance person, cause they'd always say. It's the city manager's budget, and that city manager writes the budget message, and there's no one else with that budget, it's all done by these, by everybody else. Um, so, it, it's my budget, but in honesty, it's, it's these guys' budget. But you're welcome to make suggestions on how we spend that money, and if you do it during the planning stages, so. June thirtieth, it's usually the day we start, so July first, get on the computer, start sending your emails saying, this is what I think.
Yeah.
You know?
So, I took a look at that hundred and thirty seven pages of budget, cause I was kinda trying to find what might be in that for the museum. And, and because it's just thrown in with everything else, that's not real clear, but what. You know, just generally, what kind of expenses, um, are included in for the museum, I mean, I know, we take care of the lights and the utilities, and.
Well, let's talk, not at Park Rec, maybe we'll talk.
Okay.
So, sound good?
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to, uh, trying to reroll or, or do anything, I've been there before for four years.
I know.
I know the system, but sometimes it would be nice that we could say, okay, this is what. Is being presented from for the parks, I mean, is there.
And actually, really, Mary shouldn't present for the parks, you guys as a commission should come up with the things that you think we should do for the parks. And then Mary and Rawl and, and Andrew will sit down and say, okay, we have this much money to work with. Of these five items that Parks and Rec Commission want to do, we can only afford these, let's go back to the parks, their commission and say, okay. Here's our, here's our dollar now, this is what we can afford, this is what we're gonna do this year.
Maybe next year.
Yeah, well, we kinda got that on our agenda through, through the year, you know, because. You know, we're, we were looking at redoing that gazebo, which we got it done, okay, that, that cost, you know, it's not free labor. The museum update, the, the dog part, you know, we got numbers. The museum update, the, the dog park, you know, we got numbers, we're planning for it, you know, the city's planning for it. You know, those were our, our proposals as it, as it is, you know? So I think.
I just wanna make it not, I'm not trying to take over or trying to do, I mean, it's just that it would be kind of nice. Maybe next year when it gets close in time to start budget, maybe then Mary can say, hey. We're gonna start working on budget. If you guys got anything, then we can, you know, but like I say, I.
I'm gonna be a Generation Z and say, no, if you want it done, you advocate for it. Alright, so moving on. Okay, we go all the way over to staff report. Um, you know, you wanna tell us about the fall festival soccer program?
So Fall Festival was our Halloween. Um, I think it was a good turnout this year. Uh, it was a little cold. Um, we didn't do it inside. Cause we were trying to figure out what we wanna do for next year. We wanna keep it both inside and outside like the previous. We wanna just do a straight inside thing. Um, I think outside worked. I think it was good. We're thinking of keeping it outside and maybe expanding a little bit more.
I would quote, yes.
And maybe just, you know, and adding possibly like a hayride or something.
Got the tractor already. Oh, I'm sorry, guys, but our insurance will not let us do hayrides.
They won't?
No. I can L U W C I, I won't say no. They're too dangerous.
Any type of hayride?
Any type of hayride. Riding on anything being pulled by some kind of equipment.
Yep, it's just open, too easy for them to fall off. I have a, uh, ex brother-in-law who lost his son. It was bailing hay. And the child jumped off and. Boom, no more.
I assigned Carter. He was like, I could drop off the tractor and I'm like, done deal. Okay.
Oh, it'll be just for show then.
That would be great.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so and then fall fi- a fall soccer, um, that was a good little turnout. Wish there was more kids, but you know, it was first time coming back for. For some, some sort of things. Um, we had four teams for the older ages. And we had six for the younger group. So it was ten teams total.
So weren't you looking for, uh, coaches?
I was looking for coaches and then it all worked out where just some of the parents just said, you know, I'll do it. So we ended up getting all coaches. Uh, we got. I think three or four teams that had. Um, an assistant coach, so that worked out. And then for, uh, referees, I had students from Mapten and from Sunnyside come every weekend. Um, and rep.
So I got a suggestion. Maybe for, not just for soccer, but for T-ball and anything else like you do. Maybe you can get sponsors like Ace Hardware. Lyles, let's stop Lyles. Wide, Wide Valley or whatever it is, you know?
Yeah, so next year I'll probably hit those businesses up. I did get sponsors for. Um, T-ball and I did get, I think I had like ten or eleven for T-ball. Um, and then I did get a few for soccer. Uh, soccer is, was a little harder just because the lea- the big leagues. Already hit all those, um, stores and the, um, businesses up. They, they, they already had let me know. We already did for the. I'm a warm recreation, so please help me. Um, so yeah. And then the Thanksgiving meals, well, um, we didn't do as much as last year, but we did, uh, close to four hundred. So it, that one was still good. I don't know if it was just because we didn't. Do the two go out of the window like the previous year. Or if it was just a missed date.
I got nothing but compliments, so. I'm letting you know, I have at least fifty two people at the center and compliments one hundred percent.
So yeah, so hopefully next year will be more than four hundred.
We're gonna double back.
Yeah, well, that's my goal. To double everything. So that way they can keep going.
Alright, so then moving on to item six for our next meeting. Um, which was actually supposed to be for December, but somehow, you know, with no meeting in November. Um, activities at Central Park and City Pool, such as the floor cement signage. Bathrooms for public and swim teams. Possible concessions at the pool. According to the WAX and scholarships for, uh, swim team members.
We did scholarships this last year.
Obviously, we didn't know that until it was mentioned.
Yeah, we, we actually, the city council passed a scholarship program for all Parks and Recs. So that's out there and they can be used for any kind of Parks and Rec activity or the pool.
Or this. No, the citizens can use it as well.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, not swim team would. They, swim team used it.
No? You don't think so?
Well, they weren't supposed to.
Let's, let's talk, talk to Jamie and see if they did. Okay, cause I, I remember the year before they did. They, they, the year before, yes, but this year was not supposed to be like that. Well, but I also didn't waive their fee this year too. Yeah, we will talk later. Okay, swim team had no money this year and they were not gonna be able to have it, so we reduced their fee from. Something that they thought was gonna be really good and cost them all of their money and thing. So we changed it so that they could at least have swim team.
So I have a question, everyone here. Um, this is for the next, for the next meeting, but it's only five oh six. Can we go ahead and just discuss it and get it done and? Not have it. Okay, well, ask it.
I mean, you can just, you can. Talk about it, but can't take any actions.
And seeing the larger in the parking area at South Hill Park, you can tell us about that already on.
Yeah, she brought that up since she was doing the dog park, so she thought, well, let's do this. Then she isn't here at very often.
I try to let you guys do your business without me being over here sometimes.
Um, didn't we? Was it in this meeting? Didn't we discuss a walk? How it's a mile park, remind me.
Um, I wanna say.
Was that here?
Rotary was gonna do that, the, the morning Rotary wanted to do it and they wanted to do it all along here. But then I think they, they took on that skate park move and they haven't really gone on this. And I missed yesterday's Rotary meeting, but, um.
If they, if they're planning, if they don't plan it, is that something that we can?
Well, even if they plan it, they should be coming to you guys and talking to you about it, in my opinion.
Yeah.
That's the way it should work. Is this, this, and I think that's, it's, I mean, I just had my evaluation today from city council, let you know, I still have a job, so. But. But one of the things they stressed is that, um, ideas need to be brought forth to the committees, then to the council. Instead of the council just kind of.
Skate park should have been brought to our attention.
I think so.
I do too.
I think so, and I think.
I think it was brought though, because we got, Mary and I got invited to morning Rotary. And I went and I talked with them and that's when they came out and that was back in like in June or July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay.
And I think, it's, to be honest with you, it probably needs to be the other way around. You don't go to them, they go to you guys and they come to your meeting and they're on the agenda.
Yeah.
And I think that's.
Invited us to their meeting.
And I think that then, I think then when they call, you say, well, actually, our next Park Rec meeting is here. Yeah, and I think that, and I think that's just a shift of the way we do things and that's just something that we need to get in the habit of doing. And I'm going to be having a retreat in January with my department heads where we'll go over that. So that they can pass it down to the employees to know that when someone calls and invites you, say, oh no. How about we invite you to pre- present to our, our commission? So, cause I think that's really the disconnect, because your job is to do what they want. You know, they, they're bringing a proposal, it, it shouldn't be you going to them, it should be them coming to you.
Yeah, cause that's a good idea. South Hill Park used to have that mile. Cause when I started, excuse me, when I started losing my weight, my daughter who lives in Vancouver, she goes. Well, mom, just go to South Hill Park and do the walk. And I go, it's not there no more.
Was it an asphalt?
No, it was just on, it was just on the grass. They had, they had, um, you had, you walked. And they had a wooden sign and had a type of, a small exercise for you to do a stretching exercise. And you did that and then you went another, however many steps it was.
The fun facts or the little tips. Every once in a while.
Alright.
Are we having a summer camp?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to keep everything the same.
What do we want to bring to our next meeting? What would you guys like to discuss? Other than I had a great time during Christmas and the new year.
I think they should bring back. A on the next meeting, that's, that needs to come back about downtown. Then we, you know, it's on the agenda to keep up the next meeting. We've already discussed about the parking lot here, so we don't need to. I really don't think we need to revisit that again. She'd already showed us on the map and everything, that's pretty self-explanatory.
Anything else?
Well, you always gotta talk about the museum, it's fun to be here.
Talk about the museum and your updates, what's going on there?
Yeah.
Now. Am I wrong, but did we have, I saw, didn't you have a certified for life cards? There a few months ago?
I did. I have four, three passed.
Okay, so we're. Cross our fingers.
Cross our fingers if the ones from this year come back and the ones that, uh, the three that we certified after. The season come back should be okay.
Alright, so I didn't know that was something for next, but it's pretty.
But I still might, um, call the instructor and do another class. Because this year we did have a lot of college and there were like two years, three years.
Yeah, be good.
And I don't know if they'll come back.
Ready to go because I know this was a little, little issue, yeah.
So made it for January for the agenda, but discussion for upcoming advance for the new year.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Do you do, uh, um, CPR classes yet?
It, it gets done with the lifeguard.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
That was good timing here.
Alright, so our next meeting, Ja- the, the first. Thursday of January is January fourth. Are we good with that?
Hard to say it's twenty twenty four.
Yeah. At four thirty P M. No, we wanna move it to four. Do I need to make a motion on that or?
We do though, do we have a, a, a big crowd coming in that day for a meeting? I guess I should ask.
I should ask on myself.
I should ask first from. You know, both. It's, it's been good to have a meeting back here. And if we don't have a, a, you know, if it's just us. Are we able to have meetings at City Hall?
If you change it to four, then yeah. Cause then you're done by five and we close at five, so that works out. I mean, the only thing that, the only thing that I like about you next meeting here. Is then you're in a facility that is something that you.
Yeah.
You discuss. I don't know. And I, and is your meeting, um, codified so that you have to, like it says what time you start? Or it just says the date, the day, the first week, first Thursday of?
When I announce it?
No, I mean, is it, does it say in the code that you're meeting on a Thursday and type? Okay, good. So you can change whatever. So as long as you, when she notices it next month? As long as she's notices it the right.
Yeah, just throw that out. Just, we'll just take a look.
Hey, he lost me somewhere.
Well, we're talking about having a meeting at City Hall possible. And they were discussing about time wise, if it's, I mean, if it stays into that.
Well, I'd like to get a motion to change our time from four thirty to four P M. That way make it easier on the ones who are working and have to be picking up kids and stuff.
I'll make a motion to put it at four P M.
But I'll second.
All those in favor of moving our meetings to four P M instead of four thirty? Signify with a I. All those opposed, same sign. Right, approved to move it to four, four P M instead of four thirty. And.
We're gonna have it here for now, right?
Yes.
Unless stated otherwise.
I think we need to make it here for at the community center because. Like Elizabeth said, you know, this is our home, this is our place. And yes, being at City Hall is more convenient for some people than it is for others. And if we're not having technical issues. And, you know. Hey, Dennis was here when I came and I found out why my email don't go out to you.
Did you see that?
No, tell me.
I just got your email from like October and I tried replying to you and it won't let me, I'm gonna have to. So Elizabeth, let me just clarify this for a minute. So we like this issue with the Rotary working on something. They come here, they tell us what they want it to work on and then we decide how that works and then do we bring it back to the city council?
That's really the way it should be.
Okay, cause we haven't brought anything before this.
And that's why the mayor and deputy mayor said to me today, the subcommittees need to be the voice of. The people and then they need to go to council with the suggestion and not Rotary going directly to council.
And then we can, once we get whatever proposal it is. And we decide that that's something we would like to do, then we can vote on one of us going and representing us.
Would it be that way or stuff like that? They're probably be better for us to do that. And Mary to do that.
So. Mary would tell Rawl, Rawl, I've got Parks and Rec that has a suggestion, this is what they've recommended. Then Rawl creates the staff report that goes to city council. And then Sherry, if you're president, you would come and you would give the report as Parks and Rec commission. And we wanna see that with all our commissions. Um, just because the, they're not being done the exact way that it says to do it in the code.
Okay, so. Mary? Rawl? Okay, I'll get it, yeah, alright.
That's kind of what we do with.
Exactly, and that's what they're wanting.
Trevor is the guy that we work with. Uh, we as commissioners, as planning commissioners. Vote, you know, we pass things and then Trevor puts together and then presents it to city, city, uh, council. And then the council can say, yes, that's good, or. Go back to a drawing board or no, we're not gonna do that, so.
Well, just keep teaching me, um, learning to learn. I mean, I've always just been the worker bee. But I, you know, I'm able to do this, so. Alright, anything else? January fourth, four P M here at the community center.
Are you gonna talk to Mary? Um, about her attendance or do we wait and see if she shows up in January?
We've given, we gave Amy and Mary both until January.
Okay, so. And do we have certain classifications that what classification is Mary, if we were looking for a replacement for that?
She is, um, element or a school. Yeah, I got that information a while back. On what? Each of us represents.
Yeah, it makes it really hard. And we're having that issue with the climate. We've had a lot of agenda. And we don't have a form. And there's been a couple of people that are just repeatedly.
So can you make a copy?
Yes, please.
It makes it really hard to conduct this and it's just like we've been in that situation. But we have given both of them a pass, so we don't have to worry, so that's.
I just think if we. With, with all the efforts we're putting in, it would be nice if we, if she's not gonna do it, that we have somebody like that.
And I understand she has family issues and, you know, that all happens to all, each of us, you know, at different times in our lives. And like Amy just had her baby. You know, I give her those, those three months leave, as you would say it or whatever, right? So you know, come January for, when we come back, we'll make those. So, you know, come January for, when we come back, we'll make those decisions.
Now, on this, Mary, where the attendance or we have people miss three to four meetings, do you go? Report them to the president or do you? Because the mayor. So how does that?
And you're actually gonna change that starting January, lead the whole committee.
Oh, okay. So there'll be a committee. Yes, so there will be a committee then.
All right. So are we done? Pearl's got her coat back on, she's ready to go, she's got children to pick up.
Oh, no, you're good.
It's five twenty, it's time to get there.
Today, I'm not the one that has to meet right at five thirty.
All right. Are, anything else? Can we adjourn this at five twenty? Five twenty one, actually. Thank you, everyone, for coming.